Good evening, directors, staff, and members of the public listening. I will now call this April 27, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. Due to the current local, state, and federal emergency declarations and guidance regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Minneapolis Board of Education is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021. With members participating remotely via electronic means, this is a discussion meeting, and no votes will be taken. This meeting is being livestreamed on our website and on Channel 15, and a recording will be available in both places. Please remember to mute yourselves when not talking to avoid background noise. And finally, for the benefit of all of us, but in particular for our interpreters and those using closed captions, please remember to speak clearly, slowly, and into the microphone. Clerk Polly, will you please call the roll for the record?
Director Arneson.
Here.
Director Alamin.
Here.
Director Ali.
Here.
Director Suriel.
Here.
Director Enz.
Here.
Director Jordan. Director Caprini. Director Polly's here, Chair Ellison.
Here.
Student Rep. Gabor Meskell.
Here.
Thank you. Our topic this evening is school climate and culture. Superintendent Astra, please go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Ellison, Board Directors, Student Representative, Gabor Meskell, staff, and others joining us this evening. Thank you for being here. I do have a couple of introductory comments before we begin our presentation on the climate framework this evening. Chair, if I may. First, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Lauren Wheeler on being named a finalist for Minnesota Teacher of the Year. Ms. Wheeler is a health and physical education teacher at Edison High School, and she focuses on helping students create the habits necessary for a healthy lifestyle, one that will keep their minds and bodies strong in high school and beyond. In her letter of recommendation, Edison Principal Erin Warne said, "One of our school improvement goals at Edison High School is to significantly increase the number of students who report that 'what I am learning in school is preparing me for my future.'" Perhaps no one breathes life into this goal quite like Lauren Wheeler does. Ms. Wheeler is a passionate advocate for the personal health and fitness of our students. She invites students to think well beyond today to a future of well-being. Lauren's students are guided to set and meet personal fitness goals that align to their preferences, lifestyles, and cultural norms. With Lauren's guidance, students see a clear path to health as an accessible and permanent part of their lives. We're so proud of Ms. Wheeler, and we wish her well in her upcoming interviews, and everyone here in Minneapolis Public Schools will be rooting for her when the winner for the Teacher of the Year in Minnesota is announced later. I also wanted to share with the board a message that we posted to our social media sites earlier today. It states, "To our Latina sisters, we see you, we value you, we stand in solidarity with you in declaring your right to feel safe in your homes and in your communities." Yet here Romero Martinez, 19, joins a growing number of women, particularly Indigenous and women of color, who are becoming victims of gender-based violence in the Twin Cities and across the country at alarming rates. Minneapolis Public Schools salutes the work of multiple community partners who provide safe spaces, advocacy, and anti-violence education for women of color and all women and girls. And so I just wanted to share that with the board and acknowledge our support.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have an opportunity to share information around our climate framework. And when we presented final recommendations for the comprehensive district design last spring, implicit throughout the plan was that each recommendation be built to support the premise that every student deserves a respectful learning environment in which their racial and ethnic diversity is valued and contributes to successful academic outcomes. We also know that adult behaviors must be concentrated on the elimination of gaps, particularly those predicated on students' race, ethnicity, home language, personal characteristics or culture, and on assurance of educational equity between students. We stress that as a curriculum is ever-changing, there will be clear expectations that Minneapolis Public Schools staff will engage in culturally sustaining curriculum development that includes stakeholder input and focus on whole-child development. This work will most definitely be aligned to our climate framework that seeks to ensure equitable practices in all that we do in Minneapolis Public Schools. And we've defined school climate as the sum of the values, cultures, safety practices, and organizational structures within not only our individual schools, but also our departments and at all levels of the organization that cause it to function and react in particular ways. And climate encompasses not only the physical attributes, but how students, staff, and community interact, and what approaches are used to solve problems. Our climate reflects whether students, staff, and families feel they belong, and how rules are determined, expressed, and understood and enforced. So tonight, we're going to share a summary of our work to date, and we'll also highlight the next steps in finalizing the climate framework and ways to ensure accountability in its implementation. At this time, I'd like to ask our Senior Officer Eric Moore to provide some of the technical portion of the presentation, and then I'll be happy to have a dialogue and discussion with the Board Directors regarding some of the adaptive concepts that are driving this work. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Senior Officer Moore.
Thank you, Superintendent, and Chair Ellison, members of the board. So thank you for allowing me the time to give you an update on the climate framework. And I'm really excited to do so. And also, thank you, Ryan, for driving the PowerPoint tonight. You know, we have a few videos here, so if they don't work, then it's Ryan's fault. So blame Ryan's track. So I'm going to just think a bit, just in the context that we're in, I just want to think it's important to ground us in our context. As we talk about the climate framework, you know, and I've shared before, I mean, we've been through just a lot as a city, our staff, our students, families have been through a lot in the community over the past year, from the murder of George Floyd, Mr. Floyd, May 25th, Capitol insurrection, November election, Capitol insurrection, January 6th. You know, we've recently, the trial of Derek Chauvin, the murder of Dante Wright, we have a second trial coming in August 23rd, and just the recent ongoing anti-Asian sentiment that we're all wrestling with. And as referenced as well, as the superintendent mentioned, just ongoing attacks against women of color, as well as people of color in general. So I want to, I want to ground this and recognize the challenge of talking about the future and a present that feels very heavy and dire and exhausting. But I really think through what Martin Luther King Jr. said about, "We must accept finite disappointment, but we must never lose infinite hope." And so I want to just acknowledge the duality of being aware of our present and then planning for the future. This climate framework, this will be a long-term endeavor. I'll talk tonight about some immediate things that from day one, our families should see, our students should see, feel, hear. I think without question, every family, student, staff member should be in a work environment that's as full of dignity and respect. And in many regards, that's what we have agency over. You know, I think about them, all the things that I just mentioned previously, all those external factors that constantly strip away from individuals' dignity, respect, value, those signals that often are given both implicitly, no, I mean explicitly, to our students and our families. What we can do as a district, we do have control over where you work, is a place in which we're respected and valued, where our families enter our buildings, or a place in which they're respected and valued, and that every student has the opportunity to have a phenomenal education and without question feel safe for who they are, as the superintendent mentioned. So tonight, we'll talk about, just really quickly, grounded in the framework, a reminder, we'll have a chance to talk about current and future work. So this purpose is to really give you an update on work done to date. I'm going to share some work around our youth evaluation, as well as our parent evaluation. It's very important as we move forward with this work, that in particular, our work is grounded in the voices of our students and our families, those in which we're called to serve. So I will share some direct feedback from those entities, and in fact, we have a couple of videos that we want to share with you. And then we'll talk a bit about some accountability structures, about what we've heard from the community throughout all of this work, in addition to the work in general with the CDD, is that there always has to be some type of accountability, that we need to move beyond the theoretical and move to the practical. We need to be able to give regular updates. Through regular updates and transparency, that's how we build trust. And that's obviously easier said than done, and just want to acknowledge that in many regards, we're pushing against a history of broken promises and disrespect, and people not feeling valued and heard. So that's a commitment we're wanting to do, and we do have control over addressing those issues, and we do it through accountability, so we'll share that. Grounding, why a framework? A framework just provides the way to organize ideas. It gives us a North Star in many regards, in this sense, the climate, aligns the work we do, signals to people throughout the district what our values are. And it's grounded in the work of collective advocacy, which is that people have shared values and a commitment to a cause, particularly when it has to do with justice, that you can overcome the effects of poverty, of racism. And so there's been numerous studies, I mean, this is the research for 20 years. Eduardo Benioe Silva talks about our challenge, a researcher, about the fact that, and this is in particular in Minneapolis, Minneapolis has a history for being progressive as a city. But contrary to popular belief, educators across the world have typically been agents for progressive racial change. However, the weight of the evidence suggests that most educational systems, including Minneapolis, right, we, most educators operate to maintain a racial hierarchy rather than to challenge it. So it's maintaining a, we call it a white supremacist culture, a way of knowing and doing, that in many cases has not been inclusive of the voices of people of color. Robert DeAngelo states that we maintain this racial hierarchy through defensive responses, anger, fear, guilt, behaviors such as augmentation, elevating issues, silence, withdrawing from stress-inducing situations, to maintain an equilibrium. We always want to feel good, we always want to be positive, in many cases, we may avoid direct conversations. And then DeAngelo talks about this as white fragility. And so I want to position these two areas in the sense that deconstructing our climate, taking a look at our climate, you know, under the guise, interrogating white supremacy, that's the real work. And so the climate framework is grounded in this dismantling of white supremacy. So here's some additional grounding. You know, first, as I mentioned, it's currently, we currently work in culture of white supremacy. So the way we know and do climate, the way that we experience our work environment, the way we know and do is influenced by that, right? So our climate is the direct result of culture. How we operate within, because of the culture, is the climate in which we exist in. And so just frankly, I mean, the climate framework will not transform Minneapolis Public Schools the way we know and do, the way we've always existed in one year. And I know that, you know, there is infinite hope from folks, but this is going to be a lot of hard work, that's going to require a lot of individual and collective commitment. We're going to need to be both reflective, and we're going to have to believe that we can make a change, and really that we can collectively change what we know and do. It's only going to be successful if we commit to each other, and we interrogate each other in our actions. But with the fundamental premise of making sure everyone feels valued, heard, and seen, we have to hold each other accountable for being our best selves. And frankly, as overwhelming as this may feel, this work, this big work, I think we can simply start with just being more kind to each other and monitoring what we say and how we say it. And really, with the goal of better serving our families, so the frameworks can provide some explicit values coming from the voices of many community members, and processes that hopefully will change the way we know and do, that result in the fact that, you know, 80% of the families that leave our district are families of color. And so, and so this is the result of just a lot of years of conversations and then collective commitments to making things better. So this is going to be grounded again in the voice of youth, families, and staff, resulting in a climate framework, and it's going to take resources, and we're going to have to have a level of accountability, both at the district level, the school level, commitment to report to you, as a school board, report, schools will report to community members at site councils. But we want to make sure that this work is understood, that everyone's informed about it, is properly resourced so that we can make it sustainable, and then we're going to evaluate to see the extent to which it's made a difference. So I'm going to share a presentation with Sarah Washington. Sarah Washington is, I think maybe you know Sarah. Sarah Washington is part of our District Mental Health Team. She is on the Site Council of Harrison Franklin, Early Childhood Special Ed, Special Education Advisory Committee. She's also one of the founding members of First Parents, that was in Parent District Evaluation. This year, she served as a mentor for Parent District Evaluation, a mother of four. And so along with Sarah, as well as Sonia Swedzil, who's a Washburn senior, they've been part of our climate framework, work, our efforts. And so Sarah's going to share, Ms. Washington's going to share a bit about the climate framework, and then we'll come back.
Hello, my name is Sarah Washington, and I am a community member who participated in the Climate Task Force.
Hey, my name is Eric Moore, and I'm the Senior Officer for Accountability, Research, and Equity.
Let's start by defining a word that you'll be hearing a lot, that word being climate. You might think we're talking about the weather, but for the purpose of this meeting, we're defining climate as a group's attitudes, feelings, and how they treat each other. A good climate is where you feel you are an important and valuable member of the community. And Minneapolis Public Schools wants to be that place for all students, families, and staff. Now that we define the word climate and what the ultimate goal is at Minneapolis Public Schools, let's take a look at how we got to where we are and why we're gathering to talk about climate.
For years, families and students have shared that Minneapolis Public Schools does not provide a positive experience for all members of this community. More specifically, families have chosen to remove their children from our schools because of concerns around discipline, safety, and academics. Currently, 10,000 students who live in Minneapolis do not attend a school in the Minneapolis District. When we hear from our students, we've learned how important relationships are, how issues of bias in district policy must be addressed, and how important it is for them to be active participants in their own learning. From the standpoint of staff, we've heard from our staff of color that Minneapolis is an unwelcoming place to work, where they face challenges such as structural barriers, microaggressions, and other negative experiences.
We also want to acknowledge the systemic racism exists in MPS, and we need to dismantle it. In addition, being that MPS is a part of the larger Minneapolis community, we need to acknowledge the injustices that have occurred in our city. George Floyd murder by Minneapolis police officers and the collective grief and the uprising following it is requiring a reexamination of everything we do. Minneapolis Public Schools demands more action, more justice, and an ongoing commitment to equity from the community that we are a part of.
By acknowledging both the passive and active role that Minneapolis played in the past in upholding systems of racism and inequality, we can move forward and work towards transformative change. We know we have a long way to improve our climate so that every member of the Minneapolis community can thrive.
We'll be taking a look at the climate framework. This model is organized by four climate values. Each values has a set of belief statements that address four areas.
The first of the four climate values is equity, representation, and anti-racism. The second value is physical and emotional safety and well-being. The third value is relationships, trust, and communication. The fourth and final value is shared decision-making and voice.
Each values has a set of belief statements that address four areas: the classroom, our staffing decisions, our family and community engagement, and our buildings. These belief statements were written by over 100 students, parents, staff, and community members earlier this year. Minneapolis Public Schools will hold each school and apartment accountable to improve the climate across the district and regular reports on progress. We want to make sure that change happens so all members of the community feel welcome, regardless of which school or building they're in.
Thank you, Ms. Washington and Ms. Swedzil. As mentioned in the video, there's four values, and the framework's organized in overarching buckets, and there were, in each of these areas, we're looking at classroom staffing, engagement, and buildings, and that was a shift from the original model that you saw based upon the feedback of the committee. But just really quickly, when we talk about equity, representation, and anti-racism, it's really about feeling valued and respected for your whole self, right, and showing others that you value and respect them. It's about, no matter where you go, feel welcome and celebrated in the spaces you're in, and also the anti-racism component, and this is in Policy 1304, about we actively acknowledge, challenge, and interrupt our own biases about others, and when we see bias committed and racism committed by others, we're compelled to interrupt that. And so that's a critical component of equity and representation, anti-racism. Physical, emotional well-being, as you would expect, that's the whole child, that's looking at protecting the physical, emotional, and psychological safety of each of our staff and students, and making sure that we nurture the strengths and assets of everyone here. We want to be a place of joy and the supposed growth of learning, and the superintendent talks about us being a, you know, an organization that learns and grows, and so it also should be a place that you enjoy going to work. And fundamentally, we want our students to enjoy going to school. And it's also acknowledging that harm can happen, right? And they were committed to practicing different ways of healing. And so within this, I'll share that restorative practice is the work that we're moving forward is within this bucket. But it is acknowledging that there's times that we harm each other physically, emotionally, and psychologically, and that we have to repair and heal in very different ways. Relationships, trust, and communication, this is just building positive relationships with each other. As we engage with each other, making sure that we have our backgrounds known and valued, and our talents known and recognized, and that we also want to create conditions that for people, when they speak up and they feel wronged, that there's a place where people can be heard, and that is extremely important. Finally, shared decision-making and voice, that's just really being heard and understood without judgment, ensuring power between staff, families, and students, and there's a variety of ways that we do that. Fundamentally, the work on site councils will be critical in that, which I'll go into a bit. Again, every area of this climate framework is going to be guided, discussion with students, families, staff, school leaders, we've engaged community-based organizations. We're working with our youth evaluators, our citywide government, our parents, and that's informing our belief statements, which will be contained, and there's much larger information on the climate framework. If you Google "climate framework in Minneapolis Public Schools," you will see even a white paper on the purpose of the climate framework, as well as the belief statements, membership. But stakeholder voice will also inform school and department climate plans. So the idea is that every department and school will have a plan to address how climate is going to get better, and what are the things that we want to focus on. And so in a very real sense, we know that culture is contextual, and that culture impacts the way people exist in an environment. So huge emphasis on parent and student voice and teacher voice at the site level, so that those locations, but guided by our overarching values. And there'll be a climate index, which I'll be able to, I'll go into tonight, which really has to do with how are we measuring whether or not climate is adequate or getting better, what are the things we need to work on. Just a snapshot, you know, this is, again, I talked about it being longitudinal work, as well as individual work at the site. And so these are things, you may have heard these areas, and so what a framework is doing is organizing initiatives. Many of you may see these within the Conference of District Design. So in equity, representation, and racism, that bucket, what you're looking at is really efforts around teacher of color recruitment and retention, addressing some of the microaggressions that our teachers of color, staff of color feel, just talking about what students experience in the classroom in terms of seeing themselves in the curriculum, so you see the curriculum transformation work, you see the work we talked about at our last meeting on the equity competencies, define the knowledge and skills we need to have in the Minneapolis Public School community in order to be anti-racist and to have our work led around equity. It's also, you see the professional development equity training for all, also a racial, you got inferancies, racial, gender, it's a discrimination incident protocol. So, you know, one of the learnings that we've had in engaging with our community is that we need just a clear protocol when an incident happens, both in the school and our community, both of what we do when it happens, and certainly an emphasis on repairing harm. So you're going to see that in the equity, representation, and anti-racism bucket. Physical, emotional safety and well-being, you see some initiatives there. We've done it through the CDD, Conference of District Design, an investment in mental health supports, we know that that was needed. There's also going to be increased opportunities for youth enrichment, you heard, I believe, last week, some additional opportunities in the summer as a result of some of the federal funding. But the after-school programming was central, so some of the work on the Conference of District Design. Athletics matters, right, in terms of being engaged, after-school activities, restorative practices. Oftentimes, when we think about physical, emotional safety and well-being, there's also a bucket around our buildings and grounds, like it really matters how schools look physically. We want our buildings to be clean, and I know Senior Officer DeVette focuses on clean buildings, beautiful buildings, landscaping. We want our students to feel, have a sense of pride in where they go to school. There's positions, the shift away from school resource officers to emergent management specialists. We've established an ombuds office, so there'll be a staff person to address both teacher-staff complaints and parent complaints around issues of microaggressions, and that is grounded in much of the work of the Human Resource Equity Diversity Impact Assessment. There's climate specialists, there's, in every building that you're going to have behavior, you're going to have an evaluation, equity teams, then social, emotional learning teams. Relationship of trust and communication, we're going to be very intentional on our feedback loops. One of the things that we've learned over the years is it's not enough just to ask families, staff, students what they think, but respectfully, we need to come back and share how we use their feedback and information, right? And through that, the ability to work with people, have people feel heard, invest resources to make change based upon feedback, we believe you develop trust and relationships through that. Of course, we want to see signage, videos, websites, we want to see our values throughout the district. People need to be able to walk in all of our buildings and know where we stand and who we are as a district. Translations, videos, tutorials, I mean, there should now, parents should have the opportunity as they're engaging in their preferred language to be able to engage and engage in school, and not have language be a barrier to participation and engagement. And then shared decision-making and voice, I mean, this is where you see a parent and youth evaluation programs, citywide government, representative site councils. We want our site councils to be empowered. We talked about making sure that every parent who is a part of a site council understands what a site council understands what a site council should be doing. I mean, that is a space in which the academics, the budgets, right, the finances, the parent engagement initiatives are reviewed. And we're going to do some deep work around site councils. And also, those site councils will be representative of the student populations. And then also, you know, we're looking at our principal hiring process and making sure that we extend beyond site councils, but we do more deliberate efforts and get other community members at that site engaged in hiring their leader with the support of the associate superintendents. So that's a snapshot. And so that's the district work. But this is very important in terms of what you can expect day one. Because I mentioned earlier, and the superintendent mentioned, very clear that there's technical work, and then there's adaptive work. And much of the work around climate is really how you feel. You know, you walk into, and I think all of us have been in spaces in which we feel valued and respected. And it just feels different. And we engage very differently in those spaces. So here's what, you know, from fall twenty-one, every family should be able to see is, you should be able to walk in a building and see value statements when you walk in and you know where we stand, who we are. We are a district that believes in equity, anti-racism. We're a district that believes in the whole child. We're a district that values relationships, trust, communication, shared decision-making and voice. Okay, so hopefully that, you know, I think if as a parent, as a community, right, be intrigued, like, what does that mean? So you have these value statements. Fundamentally, everyone should be acknowledged and greeted with dignity and respect. That's a big thing. That's a big deal. A hi, may I help you? An acknowledgement when you walk into an office or you walk into the Davis Center. And I'll just mention one of our fantastic staff, Katrina, who works at the front desk. And it makes a difference when she's saying, "Good morning, may I help you?" And then timely and respectful communication. Communication in different languages, events, and conferences. You'll see multiple opportunities for feedback. And as we have community forums around the climate values, and we have site councils, and we take youth voice and parent voice in developing plans, that's something that we'll immediately see. And there'll be a clear feedback process, right, through the site councils, academics, budget, family engagement. Parents should be able to know where to go when something's not working for them. Where do they go to improve their daily experience? And so that's something that we've heard very clearly from families. A clear and transparent process of how to address incidences around race, gender, ability, you know, and how do we heal on those situations? So it's four phases. And so we've talked a bit about phase one. We have our belief statements, we have our framework, we've done a couple of reports to the board. We're currently, if you go to the next slide, next slide, in phase two, which is we're really trying to have conversations about the climate framework. We're having preliminary conversations, principals around climate strategies and also departments. This is, again, a progress report to you. The real, the deep work begins, phase three, as we begin fall, as we start developing our goals and strategies. Given the amount of transition between schools as a result of the CDD, we thought it's best that the climate plans are developed when the new populations come together, as the new families from different boundaries, through the boundary change, come together. So we'll see the development of school goals and strategies. Our departments will also be focusing on climate. We'll see a climate index, progress reports. Also, what you're going to see between phase two and phase three is more community events. I mean, I think that's, you can't underestimate, you know, as we, as we transition through COVID-nineteen, the pandemic, and we have more opportunities to engage with each other in relationship. You know, we're going to see more opportunities to engage with each other in our school communities. And then phase four is just the ongoing work, which is sustaining our beliefs and community practices. I wanted to share some of the YPE themes and talk a bit. You know, I think available to everyone is, there's been a meta-analysis. When we've been talking to our youth since two thousand and fifteen with our youth evaluation groups, so every middle and high school. And, you know, again, they've been very clear in terms, they want to see more staff of color. They want to see all staff be able to work with all different types of students. They want to see professional development. One of the things that we can expect to see is our parents and our youth supporting more actively the professional development, I think is critical. We think it's critical for the adults in the system, both Davis and our, and our teaching staff, and our principals, other staff in the buildings, hear directly from staff about how our actions impact them, what works, what doesn't. You know, our students want to say that schools should be connected to real life. Some of the curriculum transformation work again. Opportunities for student voice within school decisions, co-create policies. So that's really the work of YPE. I wanted to reference that. If we go to the next slide. This year, just to highlight, all of our middle and high schools, they're actually going to record in our COVID-nineteen context, their project presentations. What's going to be different, and these will be public, these will be available to the public. What's going to be different is that, again, we talked about shared decision-making and power. We're going to ask Minneapolis' decision-makers, director's executive directors, some of the senior officers. We're actually going to watch the videos and provide actionable responses. So we're going to actively respond to what students are saying regarding climate, climate framework. So we're going to report our videos and share back with the youth evaluation teams, again, to have that respectful feedback loop. The YPE teams will watch and discuss each other's videos and project presentations, interact with each other. So again, there's an emphasis on feedback loops and also having communities interact with each other and learn from each other. So I'm really excited, really excited about that. Wanted to talk, you know, there's a couple of projects regarding relationships, trust, and communication. Very proud that some of the youth evaluation groups are actively looking at the boundary changes. And really, here's an example of Lake Harriet campus that is now their middle school is moving, those students are moving to Anthony. And so you have two teams across both Lake Harriet, YPE team, and Anthony, and they're meeting virtually. And they're talking about how to make the students at Lake Harriet feel welcome at Anthony. And so they're working together, they're asking questions about each other's schools. And then they're going to produce a video, the principal at Anthony will be a part of that. But I'm just really proud that they're actively doing that. I would just want to name, I always like to give a shout out to the students that are doing the work. So that's Elsie Grace, Audrey Pyle, Formax Sexton, Sheena Benke, Oliver Thalen, Brianna Tuskowski, Leana Cornell, Oswimi, Azradu, and Clara Stam. And so those are students at Lake Harriet and Anthony that have been leading that project. And the advisors are Lynn McCoy at Lake Harriet, and then Leah Pillsbury-Lorish-Chapo at Anthony. So very proud of that work and wanted to highlight some of the work that we're doing. Again, example of how we're trying to do some transitioning, do some climate, do some bridging across communities to support the CDD work. I also want to highlight Jefferson and their youth evaluation group. This is an interesting project in the sense that it began, this is a combination of the site council and working with the youth evaluator. So this is an example of parents working with youth. And so in this location, the site council saw that the name didn't necessarily represent the values of the families. And so the youth are leading the work, identifying community priorities. So the site council worked with youth evaluators on taking a look at a new name. So Jefferson, Representative Thomas Jefferson, school community wants to explore name change, given the historical, the history of Thomas Jefferson and tie to slavery. So schools looking at a new name. They're actually identifying community priorities, they're getting ideas from their peers. And then a final decision will come to both the superintendent and the board. But it's exciting that they're actually working together on a name change. And so I think we have a video of Jefferson. Again, I want to call out Michelle Suado, Amarian Keys, Nina Nguyen, Manatru Shabu, Laura Sfob, and Brianna Vega. Advisors Tricia Clark and Abby Keis to, for the good work that they're doing with YPE. We'll go to the next slide. And this is the work of Jefferson.
Jefferson will be becoming a Global Studies and Humanities School next year, which is very exciting. When we meet as a team, we agreed that Jefferson, named after Thomas Jefferson, by the way, was not a name that represented who we are as a community and who we will become as a new magnet school in Minneapolis. Our research question this year, what would be a good name for our Global Studies and Humanities School next year?
My name is Lewis, and I'm a member of YPE. Our school vision is where our global learners who nurture curiosity and advocate for equity. After thinking about our vision and who we are as a school, our YPE team came up with words to help represent our new school name. We're hoping for a name that shows we're open-minded, motivated, appreciate differences, inspirational, curious, and inclusive. We also want our name to represent who we are as students.
Hi, my name is Nina, and I'm a member of YPE. We decided to ask our families, students, and our teachers for name recommendations. The recommendation could be in the name of a person or an idea. Our teachers, Ms. Mia and Mr. Quincy, completed a mini-unit in social studies, asking students to think about why we name things and what it represents. We were encouraged to share the name change idea and talk to our families about it. Then we shared a Google survey with students at the end of the unit. If students want to, they could make a recommendation.
My name is Amarin, I'm a member of YPE. Eight different people completed the survey, recommend, recommended a name. The recommendations were mostly made by students. And the list was narrowed down to forty-five after we took out duplicate, duplicate recommendations. After, after, after taking out those names of people that were still alive, we left with thirty-four recommendations.
Hello, my name is Minoratu, and I'm a member of YPE. Before we started narrowing down the recommendations, we had to think about what it needs to be objective. How could we narrow down the list without being too influenced by our own feelings and opinions? Two YPE members are completing a rubric for each name recommendation, and we're almost done.
After we have the final three, we're going to create a short video that tells everyone about the names. Then they'll be asked to vote. We decided to use rank or devoting after learning about different ways we could have people vote. The final vote will be before the school year ends.
You know, if I was in person, I'd ask you to, the audience, to give the students a round of applause. In fact, they'd be presenting with us in person. But I'm just proud of the work they're doing. And just say, I just love, I love them for what they're doing, both Jefferson, Lake Harriet, Anthony, and students across the district. I think there's some remarkable work that can be done when we provide a space for students to engage and develop things and address things that are important to them. And I hope what we're recognizing also is there's some really high-level rigor, there's some rigor in the work that they're doing. And so just proud of them and the connection to the classroom. So thank you, advisors, for that work. One of the things that we've also committed to this spring, in addition to the youth voice, is that we've committed some funding for transition and welcoming activities. So we've been able to use some integration funding, achievement integration funding, to give a per pupil allocation to all of our schools. So that we're able to support things such as outdoor welcoming events, you know, as we're able to do that. Or school spirit year, t-shirts, art activities. I mean, those things really matter in terms of trying to build school spirit and tangibly trying to build sense of communities and belonging. And that's something that our students and families also say were important. And so we're having to make these purchases we made by the end of the fiscal year. We'll also have dollars available ongoing for schools. But we wanted, we wanted to commit to providing some resources for school spirit, for community building, et cetera. So that is a part of our ongoing work around climate through the work of our CDD, Conference of District Design. There wouldn't be a presentation without accountability. And so I just briefly, I don't want to go in depth on this, but we will be having an accountability measure, a climate index. We think it's important, obviously, for transparency, to be able to articulate the state of climate. Not as a, not as a top-down accountability measure, but in the spirit of continuous improvement. That is that we have to collect information in order to know what we need to improve. And so we want to collectively do that, continuous improvement, youth, parent, and staff voice. But for example, we may see things such as what are district investments improving climate, to what are we implementing the strategies identified by parents, staff, right, and school leadership in the schools? What are the perceptions? So what does it feel like, students, families, and staff, relate to how they experience climate? A great example was given in one of our parent evaluation groups. And it was done last year, I believe, at Justice Page, in which there was actually just a really quick one- and-two-question survey for families as they enter the building about how they felt, how were they, how were they served? What was their experience? And so there's different ways that we can capture perceptions of belonging, respect, dignity. And so we'll work together with our families on that. Expected outcomes. And also, I think one of the things we haven't taken a look at, but I think it is an indicator of climate in some, to some extent, we want to start taking a look at our student and staff retention data. You know, I think that we do see some variation across the district in terms of student and staff retention. So that's something to look at. Again, in the spirit of continuous improvement, we can't improve unless we know where we are at the beginning. All right, so other examples, and this will be example in the anti-racism metric. There will be a dashboard built, the REA team will be working with IT to build a climate dashboard so that our community can look at these types of metrics, as well as see the climate plans. In fact, the climate plans will be part of the school improvement process so that we can, again, have that level of accountability that's built into our existing system. Again, but most importantly, in both our youth and parent evaluation programs, rather than having just a series of top-down metrics, what's really critical is that we ask our parents and students directly, like, what does each value and climate look like in action? So again, we're constantly trying to move from the theoretical to the practical. How do we know what's happening? So what would you want Minneapolis to measure and report on? So these indicators, this climate index, will come from working collaboratively with our staff, our parents, our students, so that, you know, sharing with a group. You know, oftentimes, when we talk about metrics, I was talking to high school principals about this as well. Sometimes we measure things that people don't care about. And so if you're measuring things people don't care about, it really doesn't matter if those things are moving or not. We want our metrics to be something that people genuinely care about, where they look at that and say, yeah, climate's getting better. I feel better when I'm in either district office, or I feel better, I feel valued when I'm in my school building. So we'll work with our families, and we're currently developing that. Now, some examples of that from our parent evaluation group, in which I believe they touched about six hundred parents. Let's take a look at some of the findings. This is also first an overview of parent evaluation. And so just to give us a grounding, and then we're going to go into the findings. But I wanted to, again, I think the most powerful thing is to have the parents share their own experiences. And then we'll go into some of the things that they found with the research of connecting with about six hundred families.
It was really about connecting with people, other families that, that we know in the district and getting information from them on how they felt about the school district.
PPE is basically where we, as parents, went out and talked to other African-American parents to ask them their experience of the Minneapolis Public Schools. And just got a chance to connect with them to see what it is that they would like to see in schools.
African-American and Indian community, Native communities. Were experiencing like, some of the schools are not welcoming. Most of the schools are not welcoming them.
And yet, I'm surprised there, with all, with all these parents, with all these different concern, and yet, they don't know who to reach out to.
I think I appreciate I'm surprised when I have attended MPS meetings.
I think I appreciate I'm surprised when I had to have attended MPS meetings around the CDC that they've, you know, when they've been talking, they said, what we've learned from the PPE and so they really are, I believe, taking the information they found and listening to it.
Partner. Um, I mean, that's, it's, it's a big word. Is MPS ready to be my partner?
The language is very, very, very important. Because the, the parents, they feel good when they, they go to the school and they listen in this, in the same language, good morning.
Exactly, exactly. That's a good thing, right? Make you feel welcome.
You know, I just don't want to get a phone call when they're misbehaving. Um, I feel it is very important for our children's futures and their success in education to have the families and schools connected.
It's, it's important to talk with the other parents because they, some parents, they don't know what happened in the school. There's some, some, some parents, they don't have time to attend the, the meeting in the school.
I would encourage the teacher to try his or her best. When you're engaging with a family, you will become that family and hope, I hope that you will keep and maintain that relationship with that family.
Train the, train your staff, give them some cultural competency training to, to know more the community.
You have my son for a good portion of the day and he is my heart. And you need to take care of our kids.
Hey, just, uh, just really far, you know, if you think about what kind of district we could be if we systematically included the voices of our families, um, you know, our community and our students and our, and our teachers, and we collectively work together, uh, to make the experiences better. Um, for our collective community, I think it's really powerful. And, um, I think it's easy to, to get choked up both from, from looking at, I mean, hearing the voices of the students and hearing the voices of the parents. Um, you're very, you're hit, um, all of us, I believe. Um, you feel that sense of responsibility that we need to do better. Um, and we need to better serve, um, and commit with each other, um, to these recommendations, both from families, um, and our students. And so our parents are saying, um, that in the classroom, right, academics should represent invited diverse culture than Minneapolis. Hopefully you're seeing a through line, um, with, with what we're saying we're going to do with what people are asking for. Okay, so again, curriculum transformation, staff hiring and representation. In the families and students, staff should represent the students and families Minneapolis serves. Again, that's the, the teacher equity work, the commitment to recruitment and retention. Um, and even the equity training, right? Staff expectation, expectation and accountability, stature and body cultural humility, be accountable to the family and communities they serve. We're accountable to the families, communities they serve while we are constantly learning and engaging, uh, with our community. And if we don't know something, then we have to be reflective and humble enough to engage with our communities and our students and learn. Uh, physical, emotional safety and wellbeing, uh, families want students to have more support for mental health. Again, you see that, that we're actively working towards that. Um, physical safety on the way to school and in the school building, uh, again, a collective commitment to that. Relationship trust and communication. Uh, clearly, parents want proactive, positive communication from their child's school. Uh, one of the, the, the learnings, uh, from, uh, distance learning, I think in the pandemic that we've, that we're currently in is we have seen more proactive communication, uh, between our buildings. I mean, I think we, 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 parents have said that that has been a very positive thing. We're looking actively at that continuing that positive trend of proactive communication with our families this year to continue into next year. Uh, parents clearly want to be partners in their child's education. Um, we're going to have to though, uh, commit, uh, to looking at issues of language, um, honoring, uh, the different cultures, uh, so that everyone feels welcome. And again, this is where the cultural humility comes in, um, from the, the family engagement department, um, which is we need to take the time to learn about each other and again, to be kind to each other. Uh, and, and then here's the accountability, the community wants tangible action. Uh, they want to be included in decision-making. But again, I can't tell you how many times, and this is the, the work we have to do. We have to move beyond words. And again, parents, they want to have to feel something different. Staff have to feel something different. Folks walking into the Davis Center, um, have to feel something different. So that's the accountability to each other, um, and to the community, um, and ultimately to ourselves. So next steps, um, you know, parents are, are meeting, we're, we're working, actually the parents who participated in this last round of data collection around the climate index. Um, our meeting with, um, directors, executive directors, uh, members of the senior leadership team. So we can continue to be in a relationship with each other on the recommendations. So, so we're going to commit to following through and, and, and addressing, um, what our families have, have thankfully and, 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 uh, shared with us. Um, and we're sharing it across the district. Uh, we will, um, share the findings again with our principals, of course. Um, and with the, and with our teachers, there's, there's ideas of how to expand this work and get more of this work. Um, and what parents are saying directly to our teachers and staff. Um, and then we'll do the, the, what parents are identifying as important, we'll incorporate that into our measurements or climate index. So the last piece is, uh, just accountability. Um, won't talk a long time about this, uh, but, but just, uh, just know from a school improvement standpoint. You know, we're taking a different look at school improvement and moving beyond math and literacy goals to again, a climate goal. Um, and that we can't do accountability with any type of plan with that formally and systematically including parent and student voice. And, and so that's the commitment. We wanted to, uh, talk about the process of revising, um, the work we're doing around school improvement, which is also taking a look at culture in addition to things such as math and literacy. Okay, so you see different language now in partnership. Um, again, culture is language. Uh, uh, language supports climate. So creating equal systems and structures aligned to policy thirteen oh four. Um, we believe that, that if we create equal systems and structures, it enhances instruction and create a positive climate um, in which all feel welcome and valued and heard and seen in Minneapolis Public Schools. And this is, uh, very technical, but, um, you know, I assure you, sometimes technical is good. Uh, as you get into the needs assessment, uh, there's a couple of pieces here I just want to point out and, and bold. The first box, you see again, the explicit calling out of informed by students, families and staff, permission and vision. And the needs assessment clearly called out student, family and voice. Goal setting clearly calling out climate, right, literacy, climate, engagement, math, but clearly calling out climate. Strategies aligned, um, both the academic and the social. In fact, they, they interact. So, um, one without, you can't have one without the other. You can't have effective instruction, uh, unless students feel valued, heard and seen, right? Uh, strategy process, again, regularly consulting with families, students and staff. And then an emphasis on PLCs, collaborative work. Um, how do we get our teachers and staff to communicate with each other around climate goals? And I think it's critical and it just requires a commitment to each other and to our families and communities. But this is the work that needs to get done in order to make Minneapolis Public Schools a better place to both work and, and, and also to serve our students and families. And so we're also doing the same for department planning. Just know that, um, every department across the district will have a climate goal. Um, and we all have a commitment, each department, uh, will have to identify how we're serving our schools. So that's our role as central office to serve our schools and provide a better experience again for students and families. Um, and our budget should be aligned, as mentioned by the board, you've done that, uh, and given us that charge um, to, to make sure that our resources are aligned with our values. Um, and then we're, we're committing to doing collaborations, eliminating silos and building capacity, um, across our leaders in terms of reporting. And a similar, similar type of thing. I mean, again, the point of this is to show the intentionality of language. Family voice, climate, um, collaboration, our, our, our changes in language, uh, which again, language is part of culture. Uh, once you change culture, you change how people exist within the ways you know and do. So I think what we're trying to do systematically is change the way we know and do by embedding the important values we have around equity, climate, uh, or equity, parent voice, student voice. I mean, we want to be very intentional of those that we serve are guiding the work that we do. So again, I mentioned this, but, but again, I, I'm a, a firm believer in, in hope, um, in agency. Um, I believe that, uh, uh, collectively, we can overcome any challenge. I, I love Minneapolis. Um, I, we have brilliant, uh, both central office, uh, we have, we have a brilliant, strong, resilient group of principals, uh, and staff, teachers and, and other staff, both in the buildings and the district office. And so I, I do believe that, um, we can be both grounded and now, uh, and, and we're currently showing our strength and giving our all and doing the best education possible for our students. Um, but we're, but we can't lose, um, hope. We, we always have to plan for a better tomorrow. And, and do believe that systematically committing to this work, having those structures in place, um, will lead to a better future. Um, as a superintendent mentioned, um, it's important to do both the technical and adaptive. You've seen it, you've seen a lot of technical. Hopefully you've seen some adaptive. Um, ultimately, this is about the people. Um, you know, we can put as many structures and documents, um, but it's, it's about working together, learning together, struggling together and also being successful together. And I, I do in the bottom of my heart believe that we're going to have a stronger, uh, Minneapolis Public Schools. And Director Arneson, I'm seeing that's a high five. So as I, I was there with you, then I'll high five you, um, with your hand up. Or that may be your hand is up, but I'll, I'll see that as a high five. I feel I'm kind of fired up about, uh, what our future is going to look like. Alright. Um, but, but we can do it. I, I do believe in the bottom of my heart, we can do it. We have strong people, strong board, strong leadership team. And so, um, um, we're going to get there and, and we're already seeing how resilient we are now. So uh, with that point, I'll turn it over to the superintendent. Um, and, uh, just thank you board for your support and, uh, we're going to keep it moving. Superintendent, back to you.
Thank you, Senior Officer Moore. I, I want to just reinforce my appreciation to the students and to the parents who took the time to be a part of this, uh, presentation this evening, you know, um, not only recording it, but then the work that they're doing, the ongoing work and the commitment. And I will tell you, personally, having spoken with many of those parents who were part of the parent participatory evaluation, it's, it's quite humbling to, to hear them share, um, what they've been through as a, as a parent and as a, um, someone who's part of Minneapolis Public Schools and still be here for us and want to, to see the success from our kids. And that just shows the strength and the commitment of our community. So I wanted to just say thank you again to the parents and the students who, um, were part of this presentation. And thank you to everyone for letting us share a little bit of information around our climate framework. It was very technical, obviously. And as Senior Officer Moore mentioned, we have a lot of, um, adaptive work to do. Um, we're an organization that is, you know, based on students and being here for students. So, um, certainly expect that that's where we want to keep our energy and our focus and our commitment is around providing opportunities for our students. And I will say this as well, that, you know, great things happen when, um, students are connected and engaged to their learning, to their teachers, to their schools, to their communities. And so I feel like that's what this climate framework is about. Making sure that we're connecting our students and they're being engaged with their learning so that all these other opportunities can be expanded for them. So with that, um, Chair Ellison, I'll turn it over to you and we're happy to answer questions or just engage in conversation with the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. And, and I too want to thank everyone for their work on this presentation. Um, the students, the staff, the parents. Um, I was really happy to see some of our values reflected in the work that was presented tonight and it's particularly great to always hear from our students. I was happy about that. Um, I recently heard, um, someone say that transformation or transforming, I think Senior Officer Moore called it, um, is like rolling a brick. You actually have to do something to keep it going. And I'm just really excited and thankful that we have so many staff, administrators, um, students, um, and our board that are ready to do this work. So directors, I want you to raise your hand. Um, if you're on Zoom and if you're in this room with me, let me know that you have any questions or comments. I want to start with you, Director Arneson.
Thank you so much. And actually, um, Chair Ellison, if you don't mind, I'm going to just defer to our student representative and then I'll just go right after her. And I think that's, uh, that's the people on Zoom. Is that okay?
Perfect. Yes, thank you. Student rep, Gabor Meskell.
Um, I just had, uh, two questions about the climate framework. And the first would be just, what could students expect to be the first impact they would feel in schools? Um, I think there's a lot of, it kind of looked more technical stuff in the slideshow. It's just, what, um, and like climate and culture seem to take a very long time to kind of implement in schools, um, it's really slow going. So like, what could students expect to actually, um, like, what differences could they actually see in their environment?
Student representative, uh, Gabor Meskell, um, there are a couple of things that I think were highlighted in the, the presentation by Senior Officer Moore that I'll try and, um, expand on and give you a more concrete example. So if you look at the, um, investments that we have around mental health supports, this past year, we were able to increase, um, I think, six staff to assist in our schools, uh, around mental health. We also have contracted with, um, agencies to have, uh, school-based health, mental health supports at every one of our schools this spring. So that will continue our commitment to providing those resources to our, our students in our schools is something that you will see if you haven't seen it already, um, with the transition back to in-person. We're also looking at, um, ensuring that we have, uh, professional development training around restorative practices. So that is a commitment we have in the district. And you will probably see more of that visible in terms of the, the language that people are using. Uh, you may also see that in terms of the, the reference to when situations happen. Uh, it will be commonly known that this is the restorative practice work that needs to be done in our district. Um, so you'll see examples of that. There will also be, uh, as mentioned, opportunities to be developed in the schools around value statements. So you might see more visible signage around the value statements, acknowledgement of who we are as a, as a school community. Um, and then just the, the general feel of, uh, how we're interacting with our students, that should be concretely visible. I mean, the very simple thing of, uh, welcoming, you know, hi, may I help you? Things of that nature. So those are very simple, yet I think they're also very tangible and, um, transitions that we're, we're going to be looking for in the, in the upcoming school year. And then, um, outside of that, I think it's, uh, you know, just, just doing the, the hard work of the adaptive change. You should be able to have conversations with your teachers, you know, um, beyond what you have right now, teachers that you may not have had interaction with and they are, again, providing that cultural humility, um, and understanding and awareness of the different students.
Um, I was also wondering how the framework would kind of specifically target how the COVID and distance learning have affected students. So like their emotional wellbeing and the cultures in the classrooms. And especially kind of around that mental health.
Yeah, again, so this is, um, this is the opportunity where we've, we've had almost a year and a half of operating in a pandemic and in distance learning. And I think so much is around what, what learning has been unfinished, but I will tell you that we've come away from, we're still in the middle of, we've, we've, we've experienced through these scenarios, the value of connections and creating space, um, for our students. And so you'll see probably more of that. Um, especially at our, our secondary level where those advisory spaces and the, the time for students to connect will be provided for them. Uh, I think there's a definite awareness in our teachers and our parents and our students how invaluable that is to be able to just take time to pause and to have that reflection and to be grounded in, you know, what, um, what your needs are for the morning. And so reinforcing some of those social, emotional learning practices we had. You know, it's common in, in my work with my senior leader teams, um, to start every meeting with a, a grounding and how is checking in with everyone and how we close out. Um, and that, that can't be substituted through an additional, um, person coming in and meeting with a student one-on-one. That is everyday work that we have to make sure we're providing for our students. So you will see that, um, lesson learned through this pandemic. And then we'll also see, I think, a greater flexibility of how we're managing some of those stressors that our students have. Uh, we've all come away from the experiences over the last year with a, a better appreciation for how we react and respond to di- different things. So that acknowledgement that, you know, what you might be experiencing as a, a challenge or So that acknowledgement that, you know, what you might be experiencing as a a challenge or a pressure is different than what I might be experiencing and trying to give grace and also support for that for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gavri Mascal. Director Arneson.
Thank you, and that was a great start. This whole this whole discussion is just, I'm really happy to be having this discussion. And I actually haven't taken it to be a technical discussion at all. I think we're talking about feelings and relationships. And I don't, I guess I don't think of that as technical. But I I I do also want to acknowledge and just really appreciate all the participants who contributed to this evening. It's just, it's obvious that there's just been a lot of work been that has been gone, been going into this for some time. And it's it's good that we can use this space, this board meeting space, to provide an update for the work and have, yeah, so I I I have more of, I guess, an open-ended question that Superintendent, or you are welcome to respond to, but I'm kind of want to just put this out there as kind of a groundwork or framing. And maybe we can weave back to it as other directors have comments or questions. Although, again, feel free to, you know, react or respond to it. So I I heard, I heard some different things today. So I heard us name what we mean by climate and culture, which I I think is essential for us to make sure we understand that. And ultimately, what I'm hearing us say is that we are aiming for, where what we're trying to get to is a place where our families feel they feel valued, they feel heard, and they feel seen. Right? And we talked about honestly, about people treating each other with kindness. Like, that's what I'm hearing us say ultimately, is where we're where we're trying to, where we're trying to go, knowing that that isn't the experience of everybody right now. And then, of course, we talk about all the different, the different values that show up, including white supremacy and other social, emotional learning and other mental health and other challenges that get, other things that get in the way of 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 that. Right? So my background, I'm a social worker. In one of the core principles of social work is the importance of human relationships. Right? Like, that's a critical component of any of any any social worker. And in order, we all know, in order to to value human relationships, an important piece of that is to be genuine. Right? Like, so that that we have to be authentic, we have to be genuine if you really want to have a relationship, truly a relationship with somebody else. And to me, that's what I kept thinking about as we, as I read this information and as I listened to this tonight. And what we talked about tonight is, I guess this is the technical pieces. We talked about the action steps that we want to take. And all of those are important. Like, there are certain steps you must take to have a relationship, right? Like, you have to be present, for example, in order to have a relationship, right? We can't have a relationship if we've never met, if we never talk, there's no relationship, right? But those action steps don't necessarily mean that you're being authentic or genuine. Right? Like, you can go through the motions, but you can do so in a disingenuous way. Right? Like, so when, and then I heard us talk quite a bit about evaluation and the importance of accountability and how that's just so critical for a lot of different reasons, including what I heard Mr. Moore tell us is that it's how we build trust and that it's how we move beyond the theoretical and it's how we repair broken promises. So and this, and this is important, I think, for us to have this conversation here as a board, because this is where we live, right? Like, we live in the accountability. We live that we don't, we're not, we're we're not working day-to-day in the classroom. It's like, we're we're living in this higher space. So where kind of the under, I guess, where I'm interested in kind of framing this discussion here tonight is in this place of accountability, recognizing that we have, there's certain, I'm interested, I guess, in expanding upon this if there's opportunity here tonight, knowing that some of our measurements, our accountability measurements, are important measurements because it is the foundation that says it's happening, right? Like, some of the different things, like having a sign in a different language is is essential in order to, that's one of those things you have to do. You have to be speaking the same language in order to have the relationship. But that doesn't mean that it, that doesn't automatically mean it's a genuine relationship. So really, what I'm kind of curious to talk about more is Mr. Moore talked about the measurement of perceptions, which is really about ultimately, how do people feel? So there's a lot of different things we can measure outcomes, which is the retention of students, right? And that we can measure our action steps, we can measure the investment, which is, again, is really important from a board perspective. So I'm not saying that those are unimportant measures, nor am I saying that you don't recognize, Mr. Moore, that we need to recognize perception or measure perception. But I am interested as we talk tonight and as we continue to talk in the future about how we actually measure that perception and, because that's ultimately what we need, right? And I think that is probably with surveys and it's, it is qualitative data likely, right? It's people telling us that they went to a school and spoke with somebody who spoke their language, and then that that made them feel is really the next step. How did that make them feel? So that's why I say this was more of a rhetorical question. You're welcome to respond if you want, but perhaps it will come up as we kind of just, as we continue to discuss here. I hope we kind of think about it in terms of the concrete measurement of accountability, but also the the perception, where we're ultimately trying to get to, which is people feeling different, people feeling positive, feeling valued and feel feeling like they're being treated with kindness, which is not something we can mandate. We can simply mandate and say, you must have a sign that says it in this language, but we cannot mandate kindness. We can only set up the conditions for success. And that's really where our board is, right? We can set up the conditions of success, but at the end of the day, none of us nine people will be the ones kind of kind of holding those folks accountable or like making sure that that happens. So it, we're relying on figuring out a rather complex, a rather complex measurement. So I'll stop there for now. Thank you for indulging me for a moment. And Director Ellison, there, I know, Chair Ellison, there are no other hands up right now on the, on our, on our screen. So I turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. In the room, Director Suriel, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. More than anything, I'm trying to understand, and I'm, thank you, so grateful for this incredible presentation. And I feel hopeful in the direction that we are moving as a district. So when it comes to, as Director Anderson mentioned, like, I'm just a little like, still not clear when it comes to how do we measure this accountability? Since we cannot do like teacher or staff evaluations, you know, to ensure that we are implementing things properly. I don't know if that makes sense, but I'm just a little confused in that aspect. Thank you.
Director Suriel, thank you for expanding the conversation around accountability. I think there are, there are a couple of things, and not to get too technical, but what we are attempting to do here, I think it's been stated already, is to identify our beliefs and our values, which is part of a culture. So really putting a stake in the ground, like, these, these are the values that we have as an organization, and this is what we want our culture to be. And from there, as we begin to implement these technical elements of it, we're we're building a system, rebuilding a system, or tearing down what we've had and and redefining our system to be something different. It has more cultural humility, it acknowledged sees and hears our students and families. And from there, that's where the climate will come with the feeling of things. But in this accountability piece, there's also the importance of that we cannot continue to operate in a fear-based model. And by that, I mean, as a learning organization, one that has to have a growth mindset and we have to model humility for our students and our families when we do something that is not not right or is not what we're supposed to be doing. That we don't take the approach of saying, I got you. We take the approach of acknowledgement and saying, that is not what our values are about. That is not what our beliefs are, and that is not what we want to have happen. So how do we repair that? And how do we fix that, not only for the people who are harmed, but for the individual who created that? And I think that's a piece that is really a a pressure point in in this work is because for it to be authentic and to be genuine, people have to be able to make those mistakes and be corrected. And they have to also be humble and have enough humility to acknowledge that they hurt someone in the process. So it's a, it's a balance. And when we get to that point of having that, you know, ideal kind of space in our our schools and in our district, then the measure of accountability, whether it be through a survey or we get feedback, it will be, to me, it will be much more powerful. And as I think mentioned already, we can say, you'll have a sign on your wall, and it will say this. And some people will read that sign and and think, yes, the district is doing that check. But will they actually see that present in the everyday interactions? Will they see that in the classroom or the school where that sign is up? Or will they see that in the interaction from the bus driver or the nutrition center worker or the the superintendent or the building principal? And I think that's what we are, again, wanting to create as a culture of that belief and that structure. And I think that that, that takes one individual at a time. And it takes a commitment from all of us to to hold ourselves accountable again for that. Not to necessarily point out and say, got you, but to point out and say, we need to look at this again, and we need to revisit this. Is this aligned to what our values are? And how can we approach it differently? In a very similar fashion, how we would, how I would want us to work with our students, how we work with children, you know, as a a learning organization and and recognizing that we have close to 7,000 employees, you know, 35,000 students and many more families in our community that that have to be comfortable in being in in a space of learning.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Suriel. Director Alamein.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Ellison and the entire committee. For the information that you have shared tonight, it's definitely been a lot of information for us to try to process here tonight, I know for myself. But one of the things that I wanted to mention, and Chief Moore, I think you said it better, that those that we serve, we want them to guide the work that we are striving to do. And I think that's key in making sure that we hear from our students, from the parents and from the community. But what I, I guess what I'm leaning or want to hear more of is the academic piece. I understand mentally the challenges that we are faced with, everything that has been bombarding us here in Minneapolis area, but I don't want us to 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 kind of put the academics on the backside. And so, because I know, again, that our black and brown children are really, really struggling when it comes to academic, when it comes to the reading proficiency, when it comes to the math. And so I want us to make sure that we're putting emphasis towards that. But I also don't hear, I hear how we are changing the zones and we're changing the students input and, you know, bringing the different schools together with different jurisdiction and different areas. But I'm not hearing how staff will be maybe adjusted or how we'll make sure that we have experienced teachers at some of our least more vulnerable schools. I I'm leaning and want to hear just a little bit more on how we can make sure that that is a focus too as we're moving and trying to make this climate change the best for all of us.
Thank you, thank you, Director Alamein, for your your comments and, I guess, question around what what we can do more specifically with academics and just changing more than just the the structure of things. So to start with the academic piece, we we are talking a little bit about the climate framework. And I will go back to what I said earlier, that, you know, great things and opportunities expand when students are connected and engaged to their learning. And so that is part of the curriculum transformation work that we are doing as a as an academic team. And I know Dr. Fearing has has shared a little bit about that, and it's more than just the curriculum. It's actually the the pedagogy and how we how we teach the curriculum and what that connections look, what those connections look like for our students. So I firmly believe that that is very important, whether you're learning about math, science, or social studies. You have to have students who feel engaged and connected to that. And we will talk at our next committee of the whole meeting about our birth-to-adult literacy plan that we're developing. So that work is is continuing. And certainly with our climate, there's opportunities for, you know, the the professional development around curriculum and how that does play a part in in the climate within the school. The experiences that Senior Officer Moore shared around the YPE and the offerings that students are, again, engaged in this active research, evaluation, participation. Those are, you know, those are 21st century skills, being able to communicate, being able to synthesize information and pull that together and present it. So I I want to also make sure that we're, we're, you know, clearly talking about climate framework, but the the curriculum that supports the learning in the classroom also has to mirror some of that, that cultural responsiveness and sustainability. The the question or the comments related to what does that look like for the school? We're we're engaged right now in interview and select and know that we have hundreds of teachers that are going through a process of applying for positions. We also have a number of building principals who, for different reasons, are are moving throughout either the the district or outside of the district. And so we're taking the opportunity to really have those conversations. And when I say we, not me specifically, but I think with our building leaders and the site councils, how they're talking about what their vision is for the school and what they have determined the school will be. They're staffing for that, you know, whether it's a a language immersion program or a global studies program or a focus on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics or the arts. Any of those vacancies that are occurring are being done in an intentional way to fill those needs for the school's future. And certainly know that our professional development, you know, again, it's not the end-all, be-all, but it's part of that ongoing support that's needed for our our teachers and our our educational assistants, our prayer professionals, you know, all of those, all of those people need that support as well as they're taking on new positions. And again, the community is looking to to have things different. And and that's going to take, again, an intentional effort around professional development and staffing.
Thank you. And and again, just thank you. I think that's key information that you just shared. And I I think we can all agree that we cannot go back to how we used to do things. And that's part of the work is to continue to change and adapt to the the new normal, if you will. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Alamein, and thank you for bringing academics in this. I think as a board, we've talked about academics and how that's important to us, but also the culture and climate framework. And and we can do both, and we'll be talking about both during the year. So thank you for grounding us with that question. Director ends.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the presentation, Senior Officer Moore. And it was really great to see all the or hear all the student voices that were a part of that. And I know that this work has been not a small task. And putting together the the committee that was responsible for a lot of this work and continues to be responsible for this work, I know, has been an evolving process. And it's just really, there's so many, it's been such an inclusive process that I I I really feel good about the results and the buy-in that folks will have as we move forward. So I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank the superintendent and other staff members for really continuing to lead this work, which I think is really is vital and sort of the key next step in our major work that we've been doing at this level. So thank you for that. I I did have just a sort of a broad question. And I don't know if Senior Officer Moore, or Senior Officer Sullivan, or maybe Dr. Fearing could talk about how some of the climate work intersects with the work that the EDIA committee did around human resources. And and then from there, how that will impact academics as well. So then bringing us back to our ultimate goal, right, which is to see students succeed academically. But I think, you know, we have to recognize, of course, that culture is a huge part of that. And, you know, so all those three things sort of together, like, our staff, our people, right? Which is our, really, the bulk of our resources that we have, our human resources in in the schools. And then academics, and then the intentional climate work and how those things work together. So. So, I don't know.
Thank, thank you, Chair Ins. I'll, I'll give time to Senior Officer Sullivan and ask her to, to join me and then we can segue to Dr. Fearing to talk about the academic piece. But just, again, I want to acknowledge where I am as a superintendent with this, as a former teacher, principal, you know, leader. I, I do value these conversations around culture and climate. And I go back to my experiences working with kids. And the foundation of what we have to have is we have to have our students feeling connected and engaged to their learning. And I think until we can really demonstrate that, we're always going to have limitations on the academic success of our kids. And so I think it's really important that we don't look at this as an either or. It's a, it's an and, it's both. We need that. And the foundation is that our students need to feel loved, seen, heard, acknowledged for who they are. And that's the work that we can do as adults. We can do as adults intentionally every time we interact with them. So I just want to make sure that people understand, we, we're not talking about two things that are mutually exclusive. They are definitely connected. And the foundation of this is around our culture and climate and how we connect with those kids. But I will ask Senior Officer Sullivan to give kind of a, a framing of, we had our human resources equity diversity impact assessment, the information we received from that and how that now is demonstrated in the work that's being done for our, our teacher recruitment and hiring and, and then how that translates to academics. We can, we can move that to Dr. Fearing.
Good evening, everyone. Chair Ellison, Board of Directors. Thank you so much and Director, and thank you for the question. I think the HR EDI and this climate framework are directly linked in so many different ways. First and foremost, from the HR EDI, we, we heard directly from our staff of color how they felt like they were being treated within our system. And so a lot of this comes back to how we engage with one another, treat each other and show up for one another to best serve students. So I think there's that piece of it. The other part of it is, again, hearing directly from our families and students about how they feel most comfortable in our sites. It's been an absolute privilege and really powerful to hear from our PPE and YPE groups and hearing from them directly what it means for them when they show up in our, in our schools and our spaces and see people who look like them and speak their language, what that means for them in terms of safety and support, which is directly linked to a lot of the work we're doing around the HR EDI and working to make sure our staff better reflect the diversity of our students. So a number of ways, again, from that came the teacher equity plan, recruiting and retention practices, which I think Senior Officer Moore mentioned is part of, a big part of this culture and climate framework. So they're directly linked and I think build off one another very well. And we have a lot of work to continue to do, but a lot of the groundwork has been laid and we'll continue to, to continue to build on it.
Thanks, Senior Officer Sullivan. If we could have Dr. Fearing maybe share a little bit around the academics and how this climate framework and the work that has been done through our HR EDI supports our, our educators academically.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Good to be with you tonight and to see and hear the presentation, especially our student voices. So thank you to the students who participated. And I hope all of you were able to see, you know, the, the learning that those students had as they worked through those different projects and thinking critically. And of course, they needed, you know, fundamental skills to be able to articulate their learning, but the actual criticality of their learning and transferring into something that was very important to them. I think that's kind of the epitome of what we're looking at when we're talking about curriculum transformation. It's kind of the intersection of all of that. So when you were listening to the climate values that we were hearing of the climate framework, you know, your equity and representation, your physical and emotional wellbeing, the shared decision-making, the relationship and trust, like that should be our learning environment in our classrooms. It should also be the, the work environment for our staff. It's difficult to have one without the other. So I think when we're looking about specifically in academics, once you have those foundations there, then you can go ahead and move forward with the teaching and learning and have it be a space where students can see themselves in what's being taught. They can feel like they're a part of the learning process. They can think critically, they can have a voice, they can offer opinions, they can choose to agree, to disagree, but they all, it's all founded on this positive learning environment. That's part of what we're doing when we're talking about the transforming, it's the adaptive and the technical when you're looking at it. I'll give a very specific example if, if it's okay. As you know, many of the staff in our academic division have been out in school lately doing something or helping to support buildings. And, and here's a situation that I heard from one of our staff in a building. So there was a science lesson that was being played. And in the video that was being played, this is for high school now, most of the scientists, if not all, that were highlighted in the video were all white. And the students who were viewing the video were all students of color. And so immediately the staff member who was in the room acknowledged that, looked at that and said, hey, you know what? I want to stop right now and let you all know that this is not representative of the scientists that we have in our city, in our country, you know, internationally. And started to name some very important scientists that were not highlighted in the video, but were people of color and talking about representation and talking about the assets that they've brought to the scientific field, you know? And so right away, the engagement went out. Students were able to see, oh, you know, this isn't just about others, this is about me, this is seeing myself and being part of climate change. That was what the topic was about. And so, I mean, those are the little things that we want to see happening in our classroom, being able to identify that what we have right now maybe is not the best and it's not capturing the essence and the assets of our students. And how do we identify that right away? I think then bringing it back to what Senior Leader Moore was talking about, about the climate framework for even staff working in the building, how do we identify things in that, in our building that also need to be included in, in the aspect of how we see people and how they work? You know, how they work together and the teamwork? Because again, in order to show up and be your best self and to contribute as an educator, you have to feel valued, you have to see yourself in what you're doing. And so I think, you know, it's, it's twofold. You have the students in the classroom, but you also have the staff in the building. So, thank you for allowing me to share. We'll have more, more academic information in the next committee of the whole, but the, the climate framework is really the foundation of what we're trying to do through our curriculum transformation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ins. Director Polly.
Thank you, Chair Ellison and everyone who's spoken so far today. We keep talking about how the climate framework and academics are related. I think of them as kind of the different sides of the same coin. But I, I also want to kind of connect what I heard in this presentation from Senior Officer Moore, especially on site councils. It connects to our meeting before this, we had a policy committee meeting. We talked a lot about site councils and kind of school community leadership. And it was a good discussion and I think we heard a lot about, there's a need for more alignment and we're having a commitment from, you know, superintendent staff to come forward with some recommendations at the next month's meeting. So I think that's really great and I think that aligns with this work. And then my, I guess my question, because those are just comments, my question is, you know, I think we all really value this, I've heard really positive things from all board members. What is needed, if anything, from our board for our district to be as successful with the climate culture framework as possible? Thanks.
So thank you, Director Polly, for your acknowledgement of, or the phrase of the different sides of the same coin. You know, I go back to the old, I digress for a minute here. I go back to being in a classroom in the old traditional report card where you had the left side of the report card and the right side was the academics. And without one, you can't have the other. So again, it just reinforces, again, I think the significance and the importance of, of how this is connected to our, our academic work. And I thought a little bit about your question because I think it's something you've raised up consistently in, in previous meetings and I do appreciate it. I think that when a board asks us sometimes, what do we want or what do we need? It can be a, a little befuddling, you know, like what, what's the hidden question here? What am I, what am I going to say that is going to be the wrong thing? But I think your, your intent and your purpose is genuine and I appreciate that. And I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly, that it's not something that's easy to respond to because we don't always think about, you know, if we could have anything, what would it be from our board and supportive of our board? And I want to acknowledge again that the nine board members we have, the success of what we do in this district, I believe will be around our ability to align. So the alignment is critical. And as we talk about, how do we ensure that this happens, that we are successful for our students in creating these conditions for success, you know, or this climate framework? I go back to, we have to be aligned, we have to be consistent with it and persistent with it. We're talking about changing a culture, we're talking about creating a new structure of supports in a system. And it's going to be essential that we maintain that focus, that we don't get distracted with some of the other things that, you know, could easily be more entertaining or be more controversial or more exciting to talk about, but really come back to being grounded around, around the work and what does that mean? The example that Dr. Fearing gave about how it was a, a teacher who saw in a classroom what was being presented was not representative of the students. And rather just having people point that out and say, you need to fix it, this is awful, we shouldn't have this. They took the opportunity to expand on it and acknowledge, yes, we need to fix that. We need to make sure that we have better representation in the materials that are being presented. And at the same time, we're, we're doing the work of what it means to, to share with our students and demonstrate what a welcoming and inclusive climate looks like. So I would say we, we need that alignment, we need that consistency of support, we need that accountability of, of, you know, reflecting on where we are with things and the flexibility to make those adjustments and changes as things come up. You're seeing a, a significant connection to the work that we're doing from our literacy, our curriculum transformation, to the work that's being done on changing the names of our schools and the committee and the ethnic studies. All of these different elements are connected to creating conditions for success for our students. And I think they are in large part because the board is aligned around that. We see the benefit and the opportunity here. So we model what we want to create. And I go back to a conversation that many, not many board members were around for this, but when I think they had some support from the council, Great City Schools, and a gentleman came in and, and was commenting on, you know, how we are interacting with each other and how can we expect our, our staff and our students to have a certain level of interaction if we can't model that for each other? And I think that's, that's what we need. We need to be a learning organization that has humility, that has also an acknowledgement and awareness that we need to continue to push ourselves and, and stay focused on our commitments that we've made. So that would be a, a very high arching kind of response and maybe not too technical with saying, you know, we need these resources, X, Y and Z. But I think if we can stay grounded in that space, I think that would be great for the board.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that was a lot of stuff, but I do appreciate it. And I heard you talk about modeling, you know, modeling these things. And so I can, you know, commit as a board member to being, you know, genuine and authentic and, you know, trying to have authentic relationships with my colleagues and those that, folks that we work with in the district because if we're expecting that of, of staff and students and families and, you know, I'll do my best to do the same thing. So, thank you Superintendent Graff.
Thank you. So this has been an amazing conversation to listen to. I really appreciated the presentation. There's a few areas where I found myself tearing up a little bit when the, the parents were talking about their experiences. And it just led me into the past and how much time, and I hate to be a downer, but how much time has passed where we had so many parents leaving our district for the very reasons these parents were speaking to. And for us to be in a place where we're actually, we've, well, the district has created this amazing framework that is being layered out across the district to support families. My, my hope, and I'll always have hope, is that families, this work resonates with our families, it resonates with our staff, it resonates with us as a board. And we'll be able to, to literally rewrite the, the history that we've, what we've been through over the last 20 years. So there's definitely a lot of really hard work to do and I appreciate the fact that accountability was brought up. It was one of the things that I was concerned about. I really appreciated Director Arneson's comments about perception. And, because kids are going to know when they're not welcome, even if you have a smile on your face and you say, good morning, how are you? They're going to know, it's a feeling, it's an energy. And that's something that has to change in our district, is the energy that's, you can't see, but you can feel it, it's heavy. And the other thing that I believe wasn't brought up, or maybe it wasn't, we talked about, you know, the signs, which are great, you know, saying hello, welcome to the building, all of those things. But kids need to know that you believe that they are special. They're, they, they sense it when you, when, when it's not genuine. And there are a lot of kids that don't know how to express what that is that they're not getting and will respond in a way that might trigger a whole nother set of things. So I really think it's important to, to add that, they do have to believe it. So if someone's going to choose to not be genuine, I certainly hope that they get the Academy Award for faking it out because these are babies. And just like the parent said, which is where I got really teary-eyed, we've given you our kids, we've given them to you for a big portion of the day. So we have an expectation that they are going to be loved, be welcome. And that's what's going to turn the dial on academics. That's what's going to turn the dial on, you know, all of the, the, the rest of the climate throughout the schools, is, is how they're feeling. Because that's what's most important to me from, from jumpstart, is how are they feeling? I care about everybody else, but these are babies, K through 12th grade, I don't care how old they are. So that's it. But thank you for this presentation, it's been really powerful.
Thank you, Director Caprini, for your, your comments on that and the acknowledgement, again, of the, the parents and their vulnerability, again, and their commitment to Minneapolis' public schools. I think that, like I said before, it's, it's humbling to have that level of commitment from our, our families. And that's just a few of them through the parent participatory evaluation. So thank you for that acknowledgement. I also want to just make sure that I thank the members of the, the team, you know, Senior Officer Moore did the, the bulk of the presentation this evening. And, and thank you, Senior Officer Moore, for your work, greatly appreciate it. It, it does run across many different departments and different structures in the district, but ultimately, you know, Senior Officer Moore was able to present all of that in a coherent and a very thoughtful manner. So I appreciate what he's done with this and the coordination that his staff and, and others in the district have done to, to bring this forward. This is, this is uncharted water, I think, for us. And it's, I think, where we, where we absolutely need to be as an organization. And I would, would believe that done right and done well, this will be a model for, for things to come throughout the educational systems. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we continue to move forward with this and looking forward to being able to bring more updates to the board around this framework. And certainly welcome feedback and, and thoughts as we progress in the development of this. So thank you, Chair Ellison, for allowing us to share tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, fellow board members. This was a great discussion tonight. And I want to thank again the parents, staff and students who were involved in this presentation. I see no other questions, so I am going to now adjourn this meeting. We will meet next at our regular business meeting on May 11th. So thank you, everybody, and have a nice night.